I'd all who would care to join us in standing for our recitation of the Lord's Prayer, followed by a moment of silence. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever, Amen. It is now seven o'clock. For the City Council of Eagles call of order, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You see the green? Roll call, please, Mr. Crum.
Mr. Robb. Mr. Roberts, here. Mr. Cutler, here. Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Here.
Uh, for the record, Mr. Robb had a previous commitment for the seating, so he's not here. I would now entertain with a motion to dispense for the reading of the Journal on February the third, two thousand twenty-five.
A Lou.
Say.
We have a motion by Mr. Robertson, a second by Mr. Martin, to dispense for the reading of the Journal on February the third, two thousand twenty-five. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. Cutler?
Yeah.
That motion passes. Now comes the time for public comment. Anyone have public comment, come to the podium, state your issue with the City Council? Your seating, now. Move forward then to reports from standing and special committees. The Finance Personnel Committee did not meet, but the Special Meeting Committee, the whole discussion, discussing finances this Saturday morning at eight o'clock. The Utilities and Streets Committee, Councilman McGlocklin, we did meet.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, Utility and Streets Committee met February fourteenth. Got four items to brief tonight. First one is a review of our natural gas aggregation program. Shove the residents and small commercial businesses within the corporation limits are eligible to participate in the aggregation program. The natural gas supplier's consolation, they're the biggest retail supplier in the country. Term of our agreement is thirty-six months. It started back December first, twenty-two, and ends this November thirtieth. Residents and small businesses may opt out of the aggregation program with no termination fees or penalties when opting out. The fixed monthly natural gas rate established in the agreement at this point is point seven nine five CCF. The aggregation program has an opportunity to entertain a lower natural gas rate per CCF for the aggregation customers at the end of our term this December first. With that, we're looking at legislation authorizing the mayor to strike when rates are low. This would authorize the mayor to let Jay sell a note when they lock in a certain rate. He's what asked them, Energy Corporate. Second item, street paving project for two thousand twenty-five. To propose streets to be paved, Second Street, Third Street, Oak Street, Summit Street, McKinley Drive, and Forest Drive. The total estimated resurfacing costs are projected to be under the annual levy collection. Street paving income tax levy collection in two thousand twenty-four was six hundred and seventeen thousand. As a note, the change in the projected asphalt pressing could alter the street paving amount. On another side note, trying to build up paving fund, we are trying to build up a paving fund balance several hundred thousand over the next couple of years to help cover the cost of two major street resurfacing projects. Mickey Road is one of those, and the Lamp lighter project. As well as additional street repair being considered this year, the Clark Street work repair that we talked about, I think, at our last meeting, which was estimated at approximately sixteen thousand. The current income tax for the streets and sidewalk improvements is a one-two percent income tax levy, where ninety-seven percent goes to roadways and three percent goes to sidewalks. The term is five years through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight. Projected annual collections, five hundred and seventy-five thousand. Next topic, road salt. The salt bin is sixteen hundred ton capacity. Then was full going with the salting season. Salt each today thirteen hundred tons. The solving events at a meeting was thirty-three, and so I think we're at thirty-four right now. Averaging thirty-nine tons per solving event. Using the twenty-twenty-four state bid pricing, fifty-five dollars and thirty-two cents a ton. The salt expense per event is about twenty-two hundred dollars. Current salt and storage is less than seven hundred and fifty tons. Anticipated salt usage for two thousand twenty-five is sixteen hundred tons. Anticipated salt purchase is sixteen hundred ton. And the cost anticipated is eighty-six thousand two hundred and thirty-two dollars. Next topic is our ditch petition. If we recall back in two thousand twenty-one, we did a resolution for a Black Fork, Black Fork River ditch petition. It was not accepted by the county commissioners after extensive review by legal counsel. Since then, the constructive advice was sought to rewrite the petition to help meet proper language. The revised petition has been composed to keep the water flowing in the river with minimal obstruction and removing the law jams. That is all I have, Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Councilman Martin. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Martin? I'm sorry, Mr. McGlocklin. McGlocklin, in regard to his report. If not, we'll move forward then to City Committee. Councilman Harris.
Thank you, sir. City Committee met on February fifth. Talking about fire news. EMA, the Local Emergency Planning Committee and Richland County Partners in Preparedness have combined into one committee. So it's kind of combines EMA and some of the health department type things, so that when they meet, they're all kind of together. It's something they do work in connections a lot of the time. So Light First, Crawford County Mutual AIDS Ambulance Company that came to us and said, hey, what do you think about us helping out with some of your nine-one-one issues? And didn't see why Chief was real interested. It's, you know, we do it all ourselves, so it's not something he really wants to, you know. We don't need it, so I'm not going to entertain it. So we've known that the first fire contract with the townships coming up in October twenty-seven. And Fire EMS, the agree upon the, the, uh, continue contracts for the firefighters. They're going to be picking up business inspections over the next several years. Goal to get every business once every three years. We got to go ahead and do fire inspections for everything to select to do that every three years. On May fourteenth, Captain Sam Hugel will be traveling to Columbus for a citizens' award ceremony, recipients award, our employees at Thompson Asphalt. The employees assisted with the initial debris removal and the house explosion in Springfield Township, if y'all remember that. And that business is really close to that where that house exploded. So they were kind of like first, first civilians on the scene. So they helped out to remove some of the debris so that the firefighters could do their job. Had to visit the EMS, non-disposable supplies. That's a grant that we're going to look at tonight. Seatbelt grants, they take all the, all the money collected on seatbelt fines, put it into a pot, and kind of divide it up to, to grants. So that we use that for, you know, for EMS supplies. And pharmacy license was renewed on that day, so it's good through the twenty-seventh, or I'm sorry, the twenty, twenty-seven. We also wanted to thank Mutual Lake Departments, City Services, Red Cross, local clubs, restaurants for their assistance to fire downtown. Everybody on scene, everybody helped out with all that. Everybody came together like we always do. Fed them, you know, give them drinks, kept them warm, you know what I mean? And not just, not to mention that the other, the other fire departments that came in and helped with that. That was a very cold day, and that was a tremendous effort by a lot of people to make, to make everybody safe that day. Chief Combs didn't have anything, so we moved on to Health Department. Food renewals, inspections are due by March third. If they're not bad, they're a twenty-five dollar penalty. And they had two dog bites, two dog bites, of course. He's going to get them this time of year, but for some reason we did. On March third, there's going to be a training session. It's geared mainly for the elderly. About this time of year, not, how to not fall, fit the fall, so ice and smell and stuff like that. So, you know, just how to be careful when you're out walking around, so. And that was, that was our meeting.
Thank you, Councilman Roberts. Uh, are there any comments, questions for Mr. Roberts in regard to his reports? Here, we'll move on through, appreciate that. Reports of city officials, I have no reports, and I only have a agenda that's pretty full here, so I have no, nothing to report here. Uh, but I would like to entertain a motion for confirmation. That's all the agenda. Mr. Martin.
Would confirm the appointment of Jeff Fenner to the Income Tax Review Board for a term ending twelve thirty-one, two thousand twenty-six.
Say.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin, a second by Mr. Roberts, to confirm the appointment of Jeff Fenner to the Income Tax Review Board for a term ending twelve thirty-one, twenty-six. Just like our last candidate, very well qualified.
Yeah.
And for the discussion, roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. Cutler?
Yeah.
That motion to confirm passes, thank you. Also like to entertain a motion for this liquor permit.
Who requests a liquor license? The liquor permit hearing for Dalton Midwest LLC, EVA, Dollar General Square, four one eight eight, Seventeenth South Gamble Street.
Say.
We have a motion by Mr. Robertson, a second by Mr. Cutler to request a liquor permit hearing for Dalton Midwest LLC doing business at Dollar General Store, forty-one eighty-eight. Store number forty-one eighty-eight is Seventeenth South Gamble Street. I think you noted the document in the packet. Chief Combs, you have any comment on this, or is there nothing remarkable about it?
No, it's, it's a normal routine request. I think I sent something to Mr. Crum about it. Uh, it's a normal request. In fact, it's an abnormal request in that the notification from Department of Liquor Control was to not ask us any questions because this is a previously backgrounded application for many other sites. So they wanted nothing from us.
Mr. Cutler.
I, I, obviously, I don't know what all these codes mean, so I have to look it up. But the C one designation, I guess, means that it's going to be beer sales only, believe from my research.
Mr. Martin.
Do we know how, so it's usually, usually we get a lot of transfers because we don't have a lot of permits that are available from the state limits. Do, do we know if that fills us up in the C category?
I don't know offhand. I can check and let you know, but I'm not sure off.
Further discussion? This is the motion to request a liquor permit hearing. Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Name.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Name.
Mr. Roberts?
Name.
Mr. Cutler?
Name.
That motion to request a liquor permit hearing fails. Let's move on then to Mr. Brian Crum, Director of Finance, for the report.
Thank you, sir. Spent the last few weeks pulling what's left of my hair out for appropriations, but we'll discuss that on Saturday. Other than that, you know, just a reminder, it's always tax, season is in full swing, so please, as you get your W twos and other tax forms, swing by City Hall on our tax clerk, we'd be happy to help you to get that taken care of. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you.
Reminder being that appropriations on Saturday is primarily utilities, that's our primary focus. Mr. Cutler.
Just like to highlight that there is an opening, uh, open position in the tax department.
Yes. Did you kind of say something to Mr. Crum about that opening?
Thank you, yes. Um, yeah, we do have an opening. We're ideally searching for a tax clerk two position, that's somebody who's experienced in the field. But please, we have applications online, anybody's interested, please feel free to fill out. We'd love to chat with you.
Check our website, go from there, okay. Thank you, reminder. All right. Any comments or questions, or anything else? Mr. Crum? Uh, yeah, Mr. Martin.
Uh, so you mentioned it a couple of times, but I don't remember that we actually set the dates for our appropriations meetings. Uh, so I have it in mind to do it for miscellaneous because we have to set it for two.
You're talking about, we did set those, then removed them, and they were sent out again today. They were sent out today by email. Yeah, I think we remember originally it put, what was it, fifteen and twenty-second? Then we had the issue, so it was maybe the twenty-second and the first. And so that was what was sent out. So sorry. But, yeah, Mr. McGlocklin.
And that's basically eight to nine, and that's?
Eighty-five, yeah, so it's eighty-five. All right. Mr. Geist, Law Director, do your report. Mr. Geist, project coordinator.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few items. Um, based on when the council meeting lined up, and when I got the notice into the paper for the public hearing for ordinances two and three, two thousand twenty-five, those will need to be postponed to the March seventeenth meeting. Uh, the public hearing scheduled is six thirty before that. And that's for the third reading for those two. And I tried to talk with the engineer today. Uh, we plan on having the paving program to the March third meeting, get that out there. That's all I have, Mayor.
Which ordinances did you say?
Two and three, two thousand twenty-five. First two, yeah.
Mr. Martin, you guys ended up at that same question?
That same question.
Mr. Geist, any comments, questions for Mr. Geist, other than that? We'll move forward then to new business. Any new business that we brought forth past the season? Mr. Martin.
Oh, yeah, so several members of council have been talking. Um, you know, we get the, uh, supporting documents in our packets. One thing that, uh, I think it's good for us to get the supporting documents for the first reading, but for the second and third reading, I think we can move that to more of a digital platform, uh, so we can have access to it if we somehow lose the packet. Uh, but for us to get these thick supporting documents, every single thing, I think is a good waste of paper. So, um, you know, the clerk could think about that. And then also, since we all have now access to the online, whatever, to be able to split in there, supporting documents for the different ordinances or whatnot, so we have access to that. Just in case we do lose it, we can print it out our own, et cetera, pull it up at a council meeting, et cetera. But I think having the paper copy is good for like the first reading. Uh, but to have for the second and third reading, put in our packets again, is a little.
I agree, all hearted.
I, I second that.
Yes. And, you know, for years, so thank you for bringing this table. I think we're fine with that. We did paper copy out, and next to, like you say, have an opportunity to go digitally. I think that would serve us very well. It's all transparent, we're being open, but again, I say, trying to save some paper.
Yeah, just in the OneDrive, you know, just having a folder, and just keep those in there, and you can even have it by council meeting or whatnot. And so it'd be nice to have that too, because, you know, also we want to access the traffic study six months from now, instead of going down to the basement and searching through boxes, we can easily go to a digital copy. Because what usually happens is I go, hey, Brian, I need a copy of this thing from six months ago, because I don't go to the basement, I know, I know better than to do that. So this will also help, I think, the clerk of council.
Good points. I'm sorry. So duty noted, Mr. Crum?
I can take care of that.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Any other new business? Unfinished business, the future use of the Main Street Fire Station. Hand this over to Mr. Geist, and in just a moment or two, I am currently working, I just have a framework for the letter of, you know, property no longer municipal use. Uh, but we, you've got a document there in front of you, it's a single page. And Mr. Geist can explain what we're waiting on, and then I'll have the allot numbers and so forth, the parcel numbers that actually put that, but if you get to the, Mr. Geist, could you explain that, please?
Mayor, um, on the first page that I gave you in the white, you'll see a parcel with an X on it. In nineteen forty-eight, the school board did sell that to the city of Shelby. It was never recorded. So now our problem lies, that property was sold from the CI, or the school board to the CIC. So in essence, since this wasn't recorded before, it's, it gets a little messy of who's the property owner, so talking with our attorneys and so forth. The best way to do it is, is get a dedicated survey of that parcel, do a quick claim deed from the CIC to the city, so that before we sell that, there's no property underlying issues, one bid whatsoever. Also, if you look on the second page from the Richland County GIS, you'll see on the west side of, uh, lot number five eighty-two, it shows the property line on the east side of the Black Fork. In essence, it's actually on the west side of the Black Fork. So administrator, what you were talking about, when we do go to sell this, it could be a good idea to keep that property line on the east side of the Black Fork. So if there's ever a bridge project or whatever, they're due, O does, dealing with the city instead of the new owner of that parcel. So that would shrink that down. So, so the next step would be, hopefully, we can get this done by authorizing the mayor to do the quick claim deed for that parcel, and then we can finish, finish up that parcel before we get it sold, so. That makes sense.
Mr. Cutler.
So the parcel in question here with the X, are you planning on keeping that as city or selling that as part of the firehouse?
Mr. Geist.
So to clear things up, since the, the, the school board sold it to the city, but the city in nineteen forty-eight never recorded. So now it's messy, well, who actually owns that property? So in the eyes when this property title search was done, when it went from the schools to the CIC, that wasn't recorded, so they'd never would have found that. So what the CIC has agreed to, quick claim that deed over to the city, then the city would sell that to the new owner of the fire station.
So that would be part of that.
Correct, and that way they've got some party.
So that's what we are reading on. So hopefully, sooner or later, we'll get the, get the wheels rolling with a piece of legislation, a letter and a piece of legislation. Okay, any questions on that? All right, it's a little bit of a process. Any other unfinished business brought forth past? Mr. Martin.
Chief was kind enough to look this up, sent it to me. Um, the C one, our permit quota is ten, and we currently have eight of those issued. So we have two additional, which one is to be taken up this one. Um, and in C two, we have one additional available, and D one, we have one additional available. The others are, uh, we've got a book.
Thank you, thank you for that, thank you, Chief. Chief. Any other unfinished business? Move forward to legislation then, please. Mr. Crum.
Ordnance number two, two thousand twenty-five, enacting section twelve ninety-six point nineteen, solar energy systems of the codified ordinances of the city of Shelby.
Mr. Martin.
Uh, Mayor, I move to postpone ordinance number two, two thousand twenty-five to the first meeting, second meeting in March.
Say.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin, a second by Mr. Roberts to postpone ordinance number two, two thousand twenty-five, to the second reading in March. Discussion? This is a motion on the postponement. Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. Cutler?
Yeah.
That motion to postpone passes.
Ordnance number three, two thousand twenty-five, enacting section twelve ninety-six point twenty, traffic impact studies and access management policy of the codified ordinances of the city of Shelby.
Mr. Martin.
Uh, Mayor, I move to postpone ordinance number three, two thousand twenty-five to the second meeting in March.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin, a second by Mr. Roberts, to postpone ordinance number three, two thousand twenty-five, to the second meeting, the council meeting in March. Any discussion? Roll call on postponement.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. Cutler?
Yeah.
That motion to postpone passes.
Ordnance number four, two thousand twenty-five, vacating an alley that runs parallel to East Main Street between lots one oh three, one oh four, one oh five, one oh six, fourteen ninety-six, part of LL forty-five SD five, and part of LL forty-eight SD two, within the city of Shelby, Richland County, Ohio.
I think we'll celebrate it.
Say. We have a motion by Mr. Martin, a second by Mr. Roberts, for the second reading of ordinance number four, two thousand twenty-five. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. Cutler?
Yeah.
Well, uh, ordinance number four, two thousand twenty-five, passes the second reading.
Ordnance number six, two thousand twenty-five, amending section fourteen ninety point oh eight of chapter fourteen ninety, exterior property maintenance and codified ordinances of the city of Shelby. For forty-three.
Say. We have a motion by Mr. Roberts, and a second by Mr. Martin, for the first reading of ordinance number six, two thousand twenty-five. Discussion? Mr. Cutler.
So I'm curious as to what is being changed down here.
Mr. Roberts.
Right now, you get a, say you're, say you're parking a yard, and you get a, you get a letter. You move your, move a vehicle, then park, park your car in the yard again, get another letter. It's, it's a revolving door, the repeat offenders are, there's, there's no way to take care of those. So what this does is that you get one notice, you get one letter, and for every offense after that, the next twelve months, you get a summons and court. Now, we do the same thing with weed ordinance, tall grass, and it's two years with that. So you give one letter about your tall grass, you don't give a second chance to let your grass get tall, you just get a summons and court next time. So it's, it's, it's try to, just try to weed out the habitual offenders.
No penalty?
No.
Mr. Cutler.
So there is a little grammar thing here that I kind of want to take care of while we're at this. So there's two references on A, it'll say the mayor and or his or, his or, or doesn't A. And then on two A, you'll see the same wording, but if you go down to two B, instead of saying that, it says. And then on two A, you'll see the same wording, but if you go down to two B, instead of saying that, it says, and the director of public service, or his designated, designated agent. I would just kind of, it means the same thing, so I would just like to make it all read the same. If we could just take that and make it read the mayor and or his or her designated, I think that that would be a lot less confusing. You know, I realize our, our charter designates the mayor as the director of public service, which I get, that's fine. But I think it could be a little bit confusing for folks that don't know that, if they're trying to read this stuff, who the director of public service is. I think it's more open if it just says the mayor.
You're talking about the two, uh, B, large, a lot of the B there, correct?
Yeah.
Or it's, uh, about the second full line episode of the director of public service, or his designated agent. So you wanted to bring some uniformity to the designation, and you would prefer to have the mayor, and then to keep it consistent to be, uh, like, uh, and or his or her designated, is that what you wanted to read?
Yes.
Just like the ones up above?
Yes, yeah, just to make it all uniform.
Mm-hmm. Put that by unanimous consent?
Yeah. Yeah. By unanimous consent.
So that's, uh, everyone understand that, uh, that, that paragraph, the mayor, uh, and or, and or his or her designated, and replacing, uh, the director of public service, or his designated agent. That, that is the, uh, proposal, the foot, foot court, uh, unanimous consent. Are there any objections? Here are no objections, it shall so be changed. And you have all that, Mr. Crome, and Mr. Ex. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cullen, any other discussion on this, this is, uh, first reading? All right, we're ready for roll call.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Cullen?
Yay.
Ordinance number six, two thousand twenty-five, passes the first reading.
Ordinance number seven, two thousand twenty-five, authorizing the mayor as director of public service to enter into a contract with the International Union of Operating Engineers, local E T S, Unit B, and declaring emergency.
Mr. Martin?
Uh, Mayor, I'd like to move to suspend the rules to bring forth resolution number three, twenty-five, of the forewordance number seven, twenty-five.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Martin, and a second by Mr. Roberts, uh, to suspend the rules, to move, um, resolution number three, two thousand twenty-five, to be read before ordinance number seven, two thousand twenty-five, and take it up on, uh, put on the table. Everyone understand that motion to suspend the rules, for very good practical reasons? Are we ready for the vote, to suspend the rule? Okay, which one, Crome, you think, roll call, please?
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin? Mr. Rob, or Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Cullen?
Yay.
The motion to suspend passes, we'll move forward then to resolution number three, two thousand twenty-five.
Resolution number three, two thousand twenty-five, authorizing the mayor as director of public safety of the city of Shelby to apply for the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six training and equipment grant for the purchase of EMS supplies. Where is the resolution, we take it up, man?
Say it.
We have a motion by Mr. Roberts, and a second by Mr. Martin, for the passage of resolution number three, two thousand twenty-five, discussion. It's pretty well covered in Mr. Roberts' report. Ready for vote? Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Cullen?
Yay.
Resolution number three, two thousand twenty-five, passes.
Ordinance number seven, two thousand twenty-five, authorizing the mayor as director of public service to enter into a contract with the International Union of Operating Engineers, local E T S, Unit B, and declaring emergency.
Mr. Martin?
Uh, move that the rule requiring orders be read on three separate occasions, be suspended.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Martin, a second by Mr. Roberts, to suspend the rule, now the rule requiring orders be read on two separate occasions, be suspended, discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Mr. Cullen?
Yay.
Motion to suspend passes. Mr. Martin?
Move to go into executive session for the following purpose, preparing for, conducting, or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning the compensation or other terms and conditions of their employer.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Martin, and a second by Mr. Roberts, to go into executive session for the purpose so read, discussion, Mr. Martin?
And, uh, if, uh, this does, uh, pass, we would ask that, uh, you, Mr. Ensmann, who else? Crome, Cutler, the law director of the SOLOPS, to come to press, he's always invited.
If you need me, I'll be there, if you want, and have much to do with this and this outside council. But I just don't wanna never feel that down, I'm at your discretion. No one wants you down.
We're not.
I appreciate that, I appreciate that.
All right, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Cullen?
Yay.
The passage, council goes into executive session at seven thirty-five.
I don't have one to say, I don't have one. You like that back here. Earlier than I normally do, because they definitely love sitting here.
Let's go beside him. Let's go beside him. I will, I'll figure it out for the break of the night, I'll see you.
We gotta do that. Can they do what we wanted?
I think so, yeah, I do, there's a look back to what we always like stated, so.
Well, good. Suckers, come back to us, go get them, play the game, play the playground game.
There you go. Gentlemen, can't say I'm missing one, they didn't need me.
We're on film?
Yep.
I'm gonna thank them. I have a good one. I'm gonna go home.
Yeah. Is it off?
Sweat, I talked to him today.
Yeah.
He went ahead, got centerline done for championship drive the whole way. And he actually took whip away, all the way across the front of the school, up to championship drive.
Okay.
So then that way, all those wings are, are on there. So he sent it to G I S, and probably take a couple of weeks, and he should see over the word.
So are we going to, were those all, all those numbers reassigned?
No, I don't think it's worth it, it's private road.
Okay, you sure?
You know, I got to into it, and I couldn't get the school to G I S to get it a good scale where I could mess with it. And I was like, you know what, for what purpose? It's already in the phones, it's already in.
So I figured out exactly what I did, cause I was thinking about it this morning. So what I did was, I did sixty feet odd, sixty feet even. That's why it's a hundred and twenty feet, so they're double the distance. And that's, that's the major doubled distance. It's like I told you, I originally did it, and I did, and then I scrapped it, and said, well, it's one, two, three, four, it should've been directly across. But I kept it across, they did sixteen intervals. No big deal, I guess.
It's private roads, so.
For now. Now, what would happen if that changed, would that need to be redid if it changed? Or not?
Uh, here's the thing is, though, that road does not be our roadway, it's a bit whatsoever. So there'd be a whole big expense, and then we gotta maintain it, and everything else, so. I think.
It would make it a lot easier for us to enforce those traffic laws.
Yeah, there's that, I could do that.
That's the problem, we can do a lot out there.
Yeah, I can see that.
Block roads.
Is there a way, of like when you go to Holiday Lakes or whatever? You get, there's a sign there that says, traffic laws enforced by, per O R C, blah, blah, blah. I wonder if there is something that there could be an agreement?
I don't know.
I have no idea.
It's, uh, I think there's a question, but I, but I don't know the answer. And I've been here since six this morning, so I'm vulnerable.
Anyway.
I doubt it, but thank you.
Hey, look at this.
Who's gonna call and tell them to do it?
Thank you, Joseph. Hard to tell if it's a fine or a small. Um, okay, that is difficult.
Where they are. Three, 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 four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Well, it's. Uh. Uh. All right. Well. Thank you.
We're done. Oh. I thought we were all. Yeah. Very well. We just, now you know, you know, they all. Yeah, we. Okay. Oh. Uh, is that a good one? And hang them on the line? Yeah. The thing was, for one, yeah.
Thank you, sir. Hey, look at this.
Who's gonna call and tell them to do it?
Thank you, Joseph. Hard to.
Super strong. That's what we look at.
They're all, I mean, so. So, sorry.
I don't know where you have to say anything about.
I'm moving out.
Are you ready to resume today?
Yes, sir.
All right, we are live.
All right, council comes back into regular session at eight thirteen.
Move for the passage of ordinance number seven, two thousand twenty-five.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and second by Mr. Roberts for the passage of ordinance number seven, two thousand twenty-five, discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Mr. Roblin?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Cuthbert?
Yay.
Ordinance number seven, two thousand twenty-five passes. Is there any miscellaneous business for council, Mr. Martin?
Yeah, so setting dates for appropriations, so we have this weekend. Um, but I, I get an email, I gotta look at, um, and, uh, but we need to set this now. So, we usually do it two sections, so we're planning on doing, um, utilities this next Saturday, and then when we'll be doing the.
First, August first.
Okay, so I'll.
General fund.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be out on the first, I can't.
Do we wanna try and just do them all together, then?
I mean, that makes a really long day, I'll be honest. Like, this one, this one, we're gonna be dealing with a lot of different things, so.
Both, both of those happen in the evening, after midnight.
Um, are you okay if we do it without you?
How about, can we find a week?
Well, when, when does this have to be turned in?
The end of March. So, we could do it the following.
Do it the eighth?
Can we do it the eighth?
Do it the eighth.
Do it the eighth, then we'll just wrap it into the finance meeting. Cause that's kind of the trade-off, we usually. Uh, did it Saturday. But you, you work the Saturday afternoon.
Saturday's way better, that, not on the eighth, Saturday's way better, Saturday's better for me, because it'll run the back of the game.
Well, let's move it to the eighth, and everybody's in consensus on that.
The twenty-second to the eighth.
Yeah, the twenty-second and the eighth, eight o'clock AM, and, uh, I just, I always, I just thought my dream, dude, get it done early by just relaxing. We've done, we've done in March before, we're, um, yeah, in March, we would have our.
Well, if that was your dream, maybe.
March Madness. We're gonna join the March Madness. Okay, so that would be the twenty-second and the eighth.
Twenty-second and the eighth, and I'll just, oh, I have a, I do have a BFW meeting on twenty-second at eleven, so that's gonna be hard out for me, so if we can get this done in three hours, that'd be preferable. But utilities usually isn't too much of an issue, we're usually able to get through utilities pretty quick. The general fund, that's gonna be.
That's gonna be something.
That's gonna be a tougher nut to crack, we got some other stuff to discuss in that.
Okay.
All right.
Very good.
With that said, I'm here with the counselor, thank you.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin, and second by Mr. Roblin for adjournment, roll call, please.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Mr. Roblin?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Cuthbert?
Yay.
The motion passes, council adjourns at eight sixteen, thank you, gentlemen, and the camera is still rolling.
I thought Joe had to set that up to his computer.
I'll go call him, sorry.
We're removing, huh? It's on me. Thank you. Hey. Just go with it. Trying to watch the kids, so you think I need to just go back to work?
Huh?
It's getting hot, too. Sounds like a bad story.
Yes, sir.
My parents are watching. It was Kelly. Well, she will be showing us. Great, easy. Oh, I should say, realistically, Danny's.
I know, uh, it's close in, but.
He, he has a post.
When you have a, when you have a twenty twenty, they said that.